So maybe should I just step out? Just waiting on TV.
And it's freezing in here.
It took me, it's seven o'clock straight up. Six fifty-nine by that one over there.
Sugar's not gonna help. Once we hear the cougar howl then. Like to welcome everybody out to this November twelfth, two thousand fifteen Sholo School Board meeting. And call this meeting, discuss the needs of this school district and make decisions on behalf of the students of Sholo Schools. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve. We're grateful for the opportunity to be associated with Sholo Schools and the greatness therein. We're thankful for all that we have, dear Lord, in His name, Jesus Christ.
How motion we approve the agenda with the change from pledge allegiance to National Anthem?
I'll second it.
Have motion and second, all in favor? Carries.
Before you move on, can I say something?
Yeah.
Every time I hear you guys sing that, it's emotional for me. You're doing extremely good job of that. And in my opinion, I don't know that I've ever heard it sung more beautifully. And I congratulate you and Ms. Whipple as always. You're running a top-notch program. And we're, I'm appreciative of that. I hope I speak for all of us. We say we're appreciative of that.
I agree. Item, I don't know what else to say, but item one point two is the high school showbiz. And so is there? Anything else?
All right, so this year is our thirty-first annual Feast of Carols. And it's on the third, fourth, and fifth of November.
December?
All right, and so our tickets go on sale November seventeenth, Tuesday.
You can buy those at Laugh Green Photography.
Mm-hmm, so.
Thursday night, the third of December is dessert night. Tickets for that are eight dollars. The fourth and fifth are the full six-course meal. And tickets for that are twenty dollars each. Go ahead and come.
We have one more song for you. We're getting, I'm getting to Christmas a little early, but we are already starting Christmas. So this is a little bit of a taste of Feast of Carols. Our collar bells, sweet silver bells, songs sing to say, don't pass away. Christmas is here, ring in your chair. Once you hear words of good cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the crowds raising their sound, all in downtown in the town. Feeling the rain while people sing songs of good cheer. Christmas is here, many, 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 many. One of the sent on without them, they juggle to every home. Our collar bells, sweet silver bells, songs sing to say, don't pass away. Christmas is here, ring in your chair. Two young and old, ring and the wall. Ding dong ding dong, now this is one great dream. Once you hear words of good cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the crowds raising their sound, all in downtown in the town. Feeling the rain while people sing songs of good cheer. Christmas is here, many, 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 many. On they send on without them, they juggle to every home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. You're awesome.
Beautiful, as always.
Ms. Whipple, when will your Christmas concert be?
December fifteenth at seven o'clock in the auditorium.
Thank you.
Item one point three is call the audience. I do not have anything there. Item one point four, Junior Leadership Academy presentation. Ms. Lizardi, here.
Well, at this time, I would like to call forward Dr. Mary Jean Monroe, Judy Evans, and Ruben Lizardi.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to share with you, Mr. President, board members, administrators, faculty and teachers, and community members. The Junior Leadership Academy celebrated its tenth year on the mountain. We are honored by the state of Arizona in the out-of-school programming for the second year. And we received a plaque, which I would like to give to you, Mr. Merrill, and brochures that explain JLA. But Junior Leadership Academy is a summer, two-week program. And I think I can voice, from having been a part of it a number of years, they're ten-hour days and they're very full. And I do the data analysis. And one of the summaries we ask for from the students is an, you know, a post-evaluation. And they tell some of the simple things that we take for granted as being exceedingly important to them. And one of which is the caring of the faculty. And we're very, very thrilled that the state of Arizona has recognized JLA and helps to get our message out. I'll turn it over to either one of these two. But my part is that I'm the grandma figure. And the kids run a mile of each day when we're not traveling. And the, I don't run the mile, but I do walk it. And I am told some things that I didn't necessarily want to hear. But it gives me an opportunity to get some assistance for kids who are living in a very difficult situation. That for me, that's it. The two of you have added.
Just to send a message to our younger students, our younger adults. And hopefully, it is a positive impact, I hope, we are doing here in Sholo, as we are doing in several other locations on the mountain, I think is real positive. And I'm hoping it helps us with our drug situation, our bullying, our behavior in all. And the program has been real successful. Our SROs have helped us a lot. Officer Rogers and Phil U-Haul in the past. Brandon Clark, they've all been an intricate part of it and have helped in giving classes and making the kids aware of what's going on in today's society, I think is a real tribute. And I hope it's a positive thing for our younger kids on the mountain.
And just to add to that, they are given the tools they need to get through this life because they are hardship children in most cases. The parents are on drugs or they're being abused, you know, verbally or physically. It's very hard. It's very hard to work with these children and know their circumstances. But we have a program that works and it, hopefully the data will prove that, as you were saying, that it does work and these kids get into the high school, the junior high through the high school, and they start becoming successful people. And we know that through our experience and just watching them grow. So, thank you.
And just one other point, that we do have a lot of inquiries for, quote, can you bring JLA to our school districts or to our communities? We don't bring it. We will train the teachers, but it's got to be homegrown and valued by the community. And that's what makes the difference. So again, I thank you very much for your support over the past few years, and I hope that we can continue to be a positive. I did not do right by Mr. Hall. Kevin has allowed us the facility, the space, and probably the noise for twenty-five or so students.
Thirty-two this last year, Mary Jean.
We appreciate it very much. It's a very fine facility. Thanks to the rest of you. I will entertain any questions. That doesn't mean I'm going to have answers, but I'll.
I want to add a couple of things, Mary Jean. One is that this is the second year in a row that the Junior Leadership Academy has won the Out-of-School Time Program Award. Last year, we were third in the state. This year, we were second in the state out of six hundred and ninety-six programs. And I just, I just can't say enough about how amazing this program is. This is Ruben and I's eighth year in doing the program for Sholo. And sadly, Ruben and I are going to be stepping down this year and taking on an advisory capacity. Judy has graciously agreed to be the director for the program going forward. And we're gonna still give her our support. But in doing so, we're going to need to put in place an inter-agency agreement. I've kind of started that conversation with Greg. But that's why I wanted this put on the agenda, so that we could kind of have a discussion. The school district has always provided us with the facility, with the busing, with food for these children for breakfast and for lunch through the Title I program. And we need to make sure that the funding for the teachers and for all of those things is in place, whether Ruben and I are there or not. And so I'd like with, if we can agree to add an agenda item, maybe on the January board agenda, to, to have a, an action item so that we can establish that inter-agency agreement. Because with such a successful program, we want to see it go forward whether Mr. Lizardi and I are here or not. And I just think that it's crucial to our kids to have such a successful program in our community. And I would not want it to go away, no matter who is there.
Are most of the kids that attend this Sholo kids?
All of them.
All Sholo kids? I didn't know if some were bussed in.
We have a JLA at Blue Ridge, and we have one in White River at this time. And we try to keep it homegrown and close to home. We get numerous requests. And bring it to the reservation, bring it to this community or that community. That we are willing to work with them, but we do not package the team and take them. It's got to be honored and supported by their community. And we're very fortunate that Sholo has helped us along the way in Blue Ridge and White River. And we have a couple others who inquire every year, but then something happens and it doesn't follow through.
We're fortunate enough on our program that we only need two instructors because the Safe Schools Grant provides us our other administrators through that program. We get both of our SROs that step in and support as well. And so the male counterpart, we're looking at Mr. Hummer to take on that role. He's, we've had an initial conversation with him, and I think he'll be a great fit with Judy and kind of take on the Ruben role of the program. I think he'll, he'll be, he'll do an amazing job. And so, having, having said that, I, I think that I'd like to, to see if there's support amongst you to keep the program going and whether we can add that agenda item later on, and maybe in January, and have that, and have that agreement ready to have an action item.
Are there any questions of my?
I have a question.
Yes.
Are these children able to attend multiple years, or is this a one-time?
It depends upon the child's interest. They're basically fourth graders through the entry to sixth grade. Some do come for a second year. Some who have had a good experience ask to come as a junior counselor. And if they meet the standards that the teachers hold for a junior counselor, it's not just coming to get to do everything again. But as I said, I do the data and one of the written analysis papers that have, we ask, they want to come back next year. And if they have had trouble at the ropes course, I don't know if any of you have gone to the ropes course over in Flagstaff. But we had one young lady who went up the ladder and the tree and got to the platform and came down three times this year. And she said, finally, she did go on because the students down below were cheering her on. And she said, I'd really like to come back next year because I'll do it the first time. So it's interesting. We've had this experience on the ladder and the jump-off, even though they have this support system, by a young man who was a first-class bully. And I want you to know, he had every degree there is. And after he went up that ladder and stood at the top and froze.
And cried.
And came back down. He lost his title. He lost all this power that he had over other kids. We didn't say a word. We just said, you know, maybe next year you'll make it. But it's a challenge and it's an experience for some of these kids. They've never had the likes before.
We've had some come back and be mentors numerous years as I've gotten into high school through the student council. When I was running student council, we had those kids who wanted to come back and be a part and share that experience. And some of those kids, well, we have one sitting right there in the back row. Officer Clark's daughter's come and been a mentor for us, and what a great mentor she is. And, I mean, to have kids not have role models like that, to have that, that great of a young lady to, to think, wow. They get a chance sometimes to see what normal looks like. Some of these kids do come from an okay home. Sometimes these are, these are good kids just making poor decisions. And they need to, they need to know that there is support amongst their peers at school, that it's okay to make a good decision and not necessarily walk down that bad road.
A few years ago, my daughter was asked to participate in that, in that capacity. It was, I don't know if you called her a junior counselor or mentor or what, but as a family, we still speak of that today. And it was a very positive experience and good for her to, to be able to interact with children of her age and different backgrounds, experiences, everything. And so as a family, we're appreciative of that, appreciative of the opportunity that she had to do that. And why you know that we're very supportive of you and, and want to congratulate you on your, on your award from the state. And without jinxing you, we expect number one next year.
One of the biggest disadvantages we have is that we have the limited time capacity. And the two weeks in the summer, we're linking with the 4H group so that they have maybe quarterly meetings. But the one that was number one this year is a school program and an after-school and a parenting program.
Every day.
We didn't compete with that.
Sure, sure.
They made a greater impact. I, I'll say we make an impact. I won't measure it in any way, but numbers-wise, we probably should multiply. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I just, one thing, so everybody knows who this young lady is in the middle right here?
I'm glad you put the word "young" in there.
We could go on.
Yeah, we could.
But she has not only had an impact with our youth, but she has had a huge impact with our adults, especially in the educational program. Teaching for NAU, for all, I can, I can name a number of administrators that served here in the White Mountains, not only in Sholo, but, but around Blue Ridge and Snowflake. And I was very fortunate to be one of her students twenty-plus years ago. In your, what, twenties or whatever it was?
Just a kid.
But, but her impact is felt. And you had her too, Pam, as a student?
I did too.
It's just, it, it, you do a phenomenal job. And the two folks beside you are awesome and wonderful. But you've had such a huge impact in the White Mountains with respect to education in, in every walk of life. Dr. Monroe, I just want you to know how much I appreciate what you did for me. And, and I see what you do for everyone else.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm the grandma figure. Gil Alvidres, who is in, was in the Blue Ridge School District, claims that I made an assignment. And some of you who were in class with me will recognize that. And that the JLA came out of it. And whatever he submitted, I wrote on it, this is a good skeleton, now put some meat on the bones. And he rewrote it. And this is what we've modeled it after. So JLA has a real function because the, the four-through-six-year-olds sometimes get forgotten in the after-school programs. Thank you again.
Thank you. Tony, we got that item for January? Item one point five, the approval and naming of the softball field. And the person that was going to lead this discussion is not present, so Mr. Brackley.
Wonderful. Mr. Adams is asking permission, basically to suspend policy FF for approval of the naming of the softball field as he has presented. In your packet was a letter that he had sent to myself and to you all, asking to do that. I've worked together with him after the research and going through. There's been a number of times where we've had a policy and for whatever reason, we've, as a board, you all have decided to, you know, suspend a policy for a minute and make a change. This is one that both he and I strongly recommend. And we would hope that you do that so that we can move on and, in honor of Mr. Bingham, so.
May I ask a question about this? I'm curious why our policy says that we have to wait till someone's dead and not only passed away, but passed away for ten years. The reason why I question this is, I don't, I don't have any problem with recognizing someone after they've passed away. But I'm, I'm much more interested in recognizing someone while they're alive for the influence and impact that they've had on people. I mean, we just had a lady just leave who, you know, why would we want to wait till she's passed away to tell her how wonderful she is? And, and I would, above and beyond, you know, supporting this, above and beyond that, I'd like to look at, maybe look into that policy and, and figuring out why we need to wait till someone's passed away and passed away for so long even. So with that said, I, I support this, of course.
Can't we just make a motion to suspend the policy, or do we want to have a discussion about changing it?
Well, right now, all, all we can do is, is, is suspend the policy and, and move on with this particular item.
For this action, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And then if you will do, I'm sure there are some other reasons we can explore and bring those back to you. But I would tend to agree.
So I'll, I'll make the motion that we suspend the policy for this action.
Go second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend policy FF. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Carries.
And with that, we've just approved the naming of the field, correct?
We have to do that now.
We have to do that now, so there's, it's.
I need a motion to approve the naming.
I will, I will motion that we approve the naming of the softball field for, for after.
Naming after Stan.
Name it after Stan Bingham.
Second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Item one point six, discussion and vote on ASBA's bylaw changes. Mr. Brackley.
There's a couple of policies, well, ASBA is recommending some bylaw changes. In your packet, on the left side is the current language for Article Five, Section Five, and Article Five, Section Two. And then on the right side of those pages is the proposed change. I think Mrs. Steinhoff sent information regarding that. Anyway, ASBA requires board vote on this across the board. After you all vote, and, and if you approve these changes, great, we'll send back that that's what you did. And if you don't, then we'll send back and say that you didn't approve it. At this point in time, Ms. Steinhoff, I don't see any reason why not to approve the changes they made. But if you all have a different taste or whatever, it's, it's certainly up to you. But our recommendation would be that we go ahead and approve the proposed changes unless you have any reasons not to.
I'll make the motion to approve the ASBA bylaw changes as written.
I second the motion.
Have motion and second. Questions? All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Item 1.7, future board agenda items. We have the one that we've already addressed. Any others?
And to review Policy FF.
Yeah, is this where we would ask?
Please. To review Policy FF.
Be cheap.
Perfect.
Enter service agreement.
Okay. Item 2.1, the approval of overnight and out-of-state travel. Mr. Brackney.
We just have two. The high school, Mr. Adams and Mr. Nicholas, is asking permission for approval for the sports team's girls' basketball trips. They've added a tournament in Payson, it looks like. And this is Sedona Tournament in Payson, I believe.
That works.
It's confusing for me. And then also wrestling trip, sexual tournament in Winslow. They've added these trips and we'd like you to approve these as listed.
I make a motion for the approval of overnight and out-of-state travel.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Item 3.1, the approval of resignations and retirements. Mr. Brackney.
We have a couple requests. Ashley Ialano, as a Whipple Ranch teacher assistant, and Catherine Katie Nicholas, as a Whipple Ranch food service worker. We'd ask that you accept these resignations as listed.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignations as written.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Item 3.2, the approval of new hires and transfers. Mr. Brackney.
We're asking permission for Joanne Moore as a Whipple Ranch food service worker and Matt Goodman as a high school teacher assistant, along with transfer of Tanya Steinhoff from the administrative assistant, my secretary, to that of the ACA position in the business
Does this mean that your position would be vacant until we fill it? Or would Tanya stay in your position until we fill your position?
Tanya's going to stay in the position as administrative assistant as she is now until we find a suitable replacement.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, okay. As long as that's part of the deal, then I'll move.
Probably be doing double duty for a while.
Okay.
But within the 40 hours per week. So she'll just have to work with both hands and toes and fingers and feet and everything.
Yeah. So are you sure, Tanya?
It's up to the board.
No, you said you were being wishy-washy, so are you sure?
Yes, I'm sure.
Okay. Then I'll approve the new hires and transfers as listed.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Item 3.3, approval of certified and classified substitutes.
Certified substitutes under the regular certification process is Courtney Angel and emergency is Alexandra Norris. Classified substitutes is Pam Davis and Susan Prescott. We'd recommend that you approve these folks as listed.
All the motion we approve?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 3.4, the approvals of stipends and volunteers. Mr. Brackney.
Listed in your packet is stipends. Lori Williams is the high school PE department chair. Kelvo Kerr is the high school, isn't that Kevin?
That's Kevin.
Yeah, that's what I thought, Kevin Kerr. High school boys' basketball coach assistant. Jerry Butler, high school girls' assistant basketball coach. Carson Celine, the junior high. There's one stipend that we have currently. We're going to split it between Carson and Jeff as the splits, 75% and 25% there. Also approving Lori Williams as an event worker. And volunteers, Lyman Howard, Bob Bridges, Tanner Fawcett, and Tanya Butler.
Make a motion to approve stipends and volunteers as written.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries. Item 3.5, the approval of contract revisions. Mr. Brackney.
We were asking for one contract revision, and that is James Pike to go from a seven-hour position to an eight-hour position. I believe that's Beth's position. He's going to be moving to, where's he going? Yeah. So he went from a regular teacher aide to the PE position and therefore requires that change in his contract. And we'd ask that you approve that.
All motion that we approve, so.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Item 3.6, approval of one-on-one teacher assistant positions. Mr. Brackney.
Based on information from our administrative team and specifically Beth, we're recommending the approval of two new positions for one-on-one positions, teacher assistants. A little background, we've had some kids move in that require these positions via their IEP. And so we're just gearing up so that we can go forth and provide the need for these kids.
And those kids, because they require one-on-one aid, the dollars come with, kind of?
Their students with high needs.
Right, okay.
All motion we approve?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other question?
And this is for two positions?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries. Item 4.1, approval of final viewing and adoption of policies. Mr. Brackney.
As, just a real quick background, this is the second reading of these policies. We, when Tanya came on board, we were doing some, she was doing some research and we're getting her onto ASBA's website, checking Policy Bridge and whatnot. And as she communicated with the ASBA, we found out there was quite a few policies that went back quite a long time, till 2011, that had not been brought before the board. And that's what we're doing, is cleaning this up. A lot of this stuff, you can talk with Mr. Schubert, we have already been doing it even under Mr. Seaman. We had these policies in process and following them because it was state law. However, they weren't specifically put into place that you had seen them. As I've gone through them, there's one policy that I do want to remove from tonight's vote, and that is Policy Number 470. It deals with retirement situation. When Mr. Seaman was here, I first came on board, we had a retirement incentive. However, ASRS, the Arizona State Retirement System, started, and ESI, the third-party contracting, was coming back and, you know, that sort of thing. And they began to assess districts' dollars for giving retirement incentives. So if you give a retirement incentive of $10,000, that changes an individual's retirement that ASRS was not prepared for. And they then started backcharging districts to cover that unfunded mandate that they weren't prepared for. So as a result, we got rid of our retirement incentives. Had to, unless we were going to come up, and one year it was around $236,000, just one year for retirement teachers.
You mean they backfill for the lifetime of the retirement?
Yes.
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 And, yeah, it was, anyway, so with that in mind, we had a number of folks retiring that specific year and that's what the state was going to do. So we went through and got rid of our retirement incentives, which was frustrating for me, especially since in a couple of years, we were going to have some folks retiring. Anyway, long story short, this ASBA has put something else in and until Mr. Schubert and I have a chance to either get with ASRS, which I don't think there's any way around that retirement issue, we just want to pull that policy at this point in time. Lot of words for probably just, hey, we're not supportive. Other than that, I think there's a number of things. Obviously, there's a lot to do and a lot to go through. Our admin team will be going through each one of these policies for the next six months, just making sure that we have all of our things in order. And Pam, I do appreciate the emails and opportunities to look in some of your insight and eyes, having other eyes look at some of these things. For example, you asked a very good question about bullying and there was a form that needed to be, or that you asked about being in. If you go to the policy book on page 31, there is a note in there that says, "Forms are available in the school office." So wherein...
I think we need to add the form, just to make it easier for the student to file so that...
At least they can see. So those are the conversations that over the next little bit, as we look at the policies and the regulations, and then how we're going to actually have the procedures that'll support the regulations, the policy, we'll do that. And those are things I do appreciate. You know, more eyes on a topic is always better. So with that in mind, the situations, things have been in place, we have been following the policy, it's just that you have not officially adopted it, but because it is state law, we are on top of it and following it with that. So we'll just, anyway, just wanted to bring you up to speed. Other than that, I think overall, right now, we're good, but we're still going to have to go through. And if there's a regulation where we're going to have to strike the line or something like that, we'll bring that back to you. Or if there's something we need to add to it, we'll be glad to bring that back and give you our recommendation and have you think about it.
There's a couple I want to bring up, not many, and I appreciate the fact that you've thought about adding that policy. One of the reasons that adding the form, I think, is important, Mr. Brackney, is because sometimes it makes it easier for a student to file the form if it's not a hassle for them to do so. And one of the programs that I went to and one of the conferences that y'all have sent me to, they said that they don't make a big deal out of filing the forms until the dean of students or assistant principal starts to see a pattern. And this gives them the data to see the pattern. So I think having the form in the student handbook is a good idea on that particular one. On another one, I got clarification on the funding, on the funding one from Greg already, so I don't need to ask that question, so let me skip to the next one. The medical marijuana standards for the students, we will definitely need to have some staff training once we approve this one. And we're going to need, and I have a question because there's, on the student side of the medical marijuana card, how do we educate the students who hold a medical marijuana card when we're not allowed to ask them if they hold one? I don't understand that. I mean, I think we can go ahead and pass this, but I don't understand how, because it says that we need to educate the student cardholder of a medical marijuana card, that they, even though they're a holder, they're not allowed to bring it on the school property, they're not allowed to have smoked it before they come to school, blah, 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 blah. But how are we allowed to do that if we're not allowed to know that they have it?
And basically, it's, what we'll end up doing is we'll have to have, if we continue on with that, we'll have to educate the whole school about it. In hopes that they're there and hear about it. But for me to walk up and say, are you diabetic? You got an issue? What's your problem? What medication are you on? We don't ask those questions now. We're not going to ask them of an individual who may be prescribed that. My own personal feelings aside, we won't get into. But the policies that are now here, we're going to follow them and we'll have to do what we need to with respect to education, which a lot of that is going to be put in our policy, our student handbooks.
Handbooks, okay.
And I think we need to make sure we're doing that age-appropriate. The conversation we'd have at the high school is not going to be the same at the elementary or junior high.
Right. Well, I would hope we don't have very many elementary kids holding a medical marijuana card. I really hope. I'm sure there are some out there, but I really hope we don't have very many of those. But those were my kind of thoughts on that one. And then one policy, had we approved it back in 2011, would have saved me and Mr. Adams, too bad he's not here tonight, a whole lot of discussion about the video policy.
Correct.
And that is this one, Policy Number 420, because it has a very simple line that says, "The responsible school administrator has approved the use of the movie, video, or electronic material prior to its showing." And it gives the policy for doing so and that you have to send it home for parental consent. And if we had this, we wouldn't have even had to have that discussion. So I wholeheartedly support approving that one so that we don't even have to have that discussion.
Well, you're right.
Those were the only four, that one. And I do support the retirement incentive if it doesn't hurt us long-term like that.
For each retiree, it would affect us for 30 years after they retired.
Wow. And that doesn't say that in this policy.
No, it's...
In fact, it's stricken through the fact, they lined through the part that says for 20 to 25 years, they lined through that.
It's actually 30 years through ARS. What they will do...
Well, now, wait a minute, you're talking two different things. You're talking about 25 years of service and he's talking about after they retire for 30 years, we have to fund that extra incentive. I think...
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah. So you're talking about if you've been a member of the school district for 25 years, you get a certain percentage to go ahead and volunteer retire.
Yeah, but it doesn't say that the district will be...
So does the district.
No, it doesn't say that. That's where ARS comes in.
Yeah.
This is a policy that you could adopt for retirement incentive, but it doesn't say the fact on the backside, ASRS. So what happens is if you're making, say, $50,000 and that's what ARS is budgeting to retire on and the amount they're going to pay out, then what happens if you are fish, well, you inflate that and now you give them 10 grand extra, well, now they get 60, so it helps them in the retirement. So all that money that ARS did not budget for, the district is responsible for that.
In the backend.
Or the, yeah, in the backend. And that's why we got rid of our retirement incentives years ago with Mike Seaman and that.
Yeah.
So that would be my recommendation, at least on this particular, on these policies, that we accept them.
Except for that one.
Except the policy for, Number 470, which was that retirement incentive policy.
Okay, well, you had other things you wanted to...
Just one comment on the medical marijuana, if there are students watching.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure they understand that the policy still reads that a student's medical marijuana cardholder shall not possess or engage in the use of marijuana on district property. And so, or in any district, it still does not allow marijuana to be on campus or...
And they can't have consumed it prior to coming.
Or consumed it prior to coming. And so...
Much prior.
Yeah. And that's, these were my questions. I was like, all right.
And so you have to understand, they still are subject to all the same rules and bias of being on campus. And so there will be training needed.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody watching realized that does not open the window for...
No, it's the exact opposite, yeah.
Exactly. So...
They would have to be not under the influence, which hopefully our staff or SROs would see and recognize.
You remember, that is still debatable with the Supreme Court, Arizona Supreme Court being up here. That was one of the topics that is under discussion, is defining what means, what is under the influence.
And that decision has not come down yet.
With alcohol, it has been very specific. You know, .08, you're under the influence, you're in trouble, you go to jail, you get fined, you in trouble and whatnot. So...
Yeah. So I think some education, once we accept these policies, we're going to need to educate our staff. And there's a few others that are going to require some staff education as well. But having said that, I make a motion that we approve these and get them up to date so that we're caught up on these set of policies minus Policy Number 470.
I will second.
I have a motion and a second on the approval and final viewing of policies. Any other question?
I'd just like to bring Policy 470 back after we talk to attorneys because, you know, it's a big, I think, really great thing for our teachers. And I'm kind of disappointed that we've had these for two months and it had to be brought up by one of us that, you know, what's going to happen within our district.
Yeah, I mean, in the next four years, 24%... Yeah, I mean, in the next four years, 24% of the teaching staff in Arizona is eligible to retire. And so if there's a way that we can offer some kind of incentive that's not going to cost us for 30 years, I would like us to do it. And so maybe there's a way we can modify this and say, provide them with some other...
It would have to stay away from the artificial inflation of a salary.
Right.
Which is where that all falls into place.
Yeah, or maybe just in their last year, I don't know, something. I just, I would, I might, I'm with Stacy, I want to, I would like to be able to bring it up again, maybe in our work session or something.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries.
I would be, which way?
Item 6.0, the consent agenda. Mr. Schubert?
So tonight, we're bringing before you on our consent agenda, the ratification of our expense vouchers, our payroll vouchers, the approval of our transfers of funds, ratification of the junior high and high school activity revenues and expenditures, ratification of the food service revenues and expenditures, approval of the governing board minutes for the regular meeting of October 8, 2015, and approval of the following donations: donation of a $1,000 credit at Margion Ceramics for the high school art from NEA FAA, donation of $50 for the high school art club from Virginia Pierre, donation of napkins and towels for the high school visual arts from George Delatorre, and donation of art supplies for the high school art department from Jerry Howell at Mountain Paint Center.
I make a motion for the consent agenda as listed.
Okay, have motion and a second for the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7.0.
I'm going to adjourn.
No, I would like to say one thing before adjourn.
Okay.
Number one, we had approved that we were going to be a part of the City Fast, and that is this week. I just wanted to remind everyone, if you haven't made your donation to, can you drop in at the city, at the credit union or else?
I think any local bank.
Any local bank?
Mm-hmm.
No, any local bank. So for those of you out there that haven't made your donation for the fast this week, please go out and do that so that we can help all those in need during these holidays. And also would like to thank all of our veterans in our community, since yesterday was Veterans Day.
Now, I'll second the motion.
Okay, now have motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming, guys, and for all you that watch on TV. Have a good evening.